And leave that audio. All right. Well, good evening. Welcome to the Finance Committee. So we another work session since we are not at quorum. That means we will be loosely following the agenda, so we will not be doing roll call. We will not address the main minutes. And so we'll skip the consent agenda. Just a quick overview of what's going on tonight. We are in the midst of budget season, as I'm sure you are both aware. And part of that is the utility rates. So understand the end that we need to approve utility rates to know what our revenues look like for the Water Fund Sewer Fund and Drainage Fund for 2025. This will be presented to the Board of Trustees again tomorrow and then up for adoption on November 12. So we've invited Deputy Director Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works Utilities, Megan Smith, to present to the Finance Committee, seek your input, excuse me, and feedback, which Trustee Cannon can also take to share as in his reports with the board. Just to give you a little further preview, the budget will come in front of the Finance Committee next month. It will be in front of this committee on November 18. It has been discussed with the board at a budget workshop on October 11. It was available to the public last Tuesday at the Budget Bonanza. It will also be presented tomorrow night, the first draft of the full budget book will be presented tomorrow night to the Finance, or excuse me, to the Board of Trustees. And then again, brought here in November prior to adoption. So should there be any questions, comments, concerns, or anything that you all see or you have input? Please don't hesitate to reach out to me. You can send it to me, you can send it to Trustee Cannon. We'll make sure the questions are answered and your input is included. So on that note, before we jump in, anyone have any questions or anything about the agenda? And so we're done. Megan?
Great. Thank you so much for the introduction. So again, I believe I've met both of you. Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works for Utilities. I kind of took on the role, or kind of jumping feet first, head first, actually, into rates for both the Water and Sewer Fund when I came on with the town at the end of 2021. And so I worked with the town through the rate study that we did in 2022. So just, it's a pretty dense presentation. Likely as we move forward with the action agenda through the Board of Trustees, the presentation will get a little bit tighter. But with the presentation we give on Tuesday, tomorrow night, I want to make sure that there's plenty of background material and comparative material in the packet for education information. So we'll go through a little bit of the background, our proposed 25 water and wastewater usage impact fee rates and fees. I was able to pull together, that says water rate comparisons, it should just be comparisons. Would you do me a favor and take a couple of notes? Because I can't, I don't know how to have my, or do you know how to have my screen be up there but not on my screen when I'm presenting?
No.
I don't either.
Not when we're doing Zoom.
Right.
And sharing.
Sharing.
But I can take notes.
Yeah, so I need to update that, although it's already in the packet, but for next time. Some example bill impacts and then finally the Water and Wastewater Fund financial projections and impacts to those funds. So as a reminder, we did do a full comprehensive rate and fee study in 2022. We hired Raftelis, who is a consultant out of Denver. They have an international footprint, though they are highly regarded in the utility rate and fee setting. The primary purpose of that study with the direction of the board was to ensure the financial sustainability of the water wastewater utilities and ensure those rates and fees cover the cost proportionally across those users and all customer classes. It was also sort of the first, not the first time, but it was a comprehensive look at not just usage rates and not just one fee at a time. So we did water and wastewater and then also assessing not just those customer usage rates, but also the developer impact fees as they both impact the fund and help guide our direction. So that study did include a five-year financial plan cash analysis and it developed models that we are still using today. They're pretty user-friendly, they're intensive, but they're usable to update on a regular basis and we have been maintaining them, updating them annually. And that's letting us determines the level of revenues that we would need to meet those annual expenditures. Through this process, we did do a cost of service analysis in order to fully understand how we can allocate costs proportionally across customer classes as different usage or customer classes do have a different kind of impact on our system. And we'll get into that a little bit. We did review various alternative rate structures with a stakeholder group that was pulled together as part of that effort. Their, one of their main roles was helping us identify what kind of rate structure we want to have in place. It wasn't necessarily, they didn't have a role in defining the dollar or cents values associated with the rates. It was more about the fact that we came out with a rate that does include a usage, a base level of usage at the base fee, trying to keep that the lowest cost possible for that kind of base level required use to survive. And we did then design a set of rates based on those preferred alternatives from that rate study roundtable. It included a review and update of the tap fees, ensuring that the cost of the cost that it takes to reserve capacity in our system for new development is appropriately defined and captured. And it did have a final recommendation of 5% annual rate increases for five years and a 4% annual impact fee increase for four years. Now, that cost of service analysis, I'm beginning to be concerned that you pulled a presentation from my most recent, this is not the right presentation. This isn't your fault, this is mine. I'm sorry, guys. I knew something looked weird.
Yeah, there's a different agenda in the back.
There we go. This makes, this makes way more sense. Okay. Oh, I have to share it first. I apologize.
So the one in the packet is correct.
The one in the packet is absolutely correct. The PowerPoint I pulled up was the one that I gave at the work session for the board last month. So I apologize about that. Yes, the one in the packet is correct, because Nick is smarter than me. Let's try that again. Okay, this agenda looks correct, because I was like, I'm not looking for board direction at the presentation. Okay. Still the same background slide, that's exactly the same, what we just covered. This makes more sense, though. I did include some, I think this is important to note, these highest singular expenses that each fund does have. We have in the Water Fund, two really high expenses, two line items that kind of drive a lot of it. As you note there, that second main bullet is our SRF loan, that has an annual payment of just about 1.5 million. Unfortunately, and even higher cost than that is our annual payment to North Pooter through our water supply agreement that we have with the company. We've seen a 640% cost increase in a 10-year span on that kind of per-unit cost. We are anticipating the 2024 payment coming in at hopefully less than 2.9 million. As interest rates have gone down a little bit. So each, each even quarter percent actually makes a pretty significant difference on that overall payment. So hopefully it'll come down even more, perhaps even be a lower final payment than this projected estimate is. I did include just for background information, so it's all in one place and easily accessible, just sort of the historical track of our, of our rates and fees. Really more historical there at the bottom and then those most more recent structure changes and the accompanying rate increases since 23 and then that rate increased in 24. And I did want to note, I did a quick, a quick math on, on noting that looking at these rates and that same 10-year span that I noted that we saw a 640% increase on that one line item, just one line item in our operations budget. The increase in rates that we've seen over that same time period has been about 300%. And I do not want to state that that's not a lot. Because that's a lot. It's more than anybody would like to see, including staff for sure. But it's still not been enough to keep up with even just the rating, you know, the cost increase for just that one item, let alone the other electricity, natural gas, chemical costs, just labor costs, everything that's gone up in that same 10-year span. We just haven't, we can't keep up with the cost increase on that contract. So not to sour the mood, but similar just background set of our, what wastewater rates. I will say, and we, we sort of went the opposite direction for with the new rate structure that went in place in 23, where we historically had included a base level of usage in the base rate for our sewer rates. That's why those base rates you could see historically were quite a bit higher, but they included, I think, 3,000 gallons, yep. And then we shifted with the new rate structure, it was proposed that the base rate not include anything. So for those even smaller users that are maybe only averaging 2,000 gallons of water use in the winter, which we do have, they're not paying for more than what they're needing in on the wastewater side. So when, you know, we included base use in the base rate for water and we excluded base use in the base rate for sewer, just to confuse everyone. And then a snapshot of where we've been with our capital investment fees over the last decade or so as well, 15 years. You can't see there's been, there was some, there have been increases over time, absolutely. And we've seen some pretty significant increases in the last few years. And we'll continue to see increases there. We did separate with, and then one big change that came with that fee structure analysis in 2022 was that separation of multifamily versus single family. So there being a different capital investment fee per multifamily unit. So do keep in mind, this is not per multifamily tap. It's going to be based on the number of units in the development. You know, so a 10-unit building, it's going to be 10 times that, you know, $7,600 number. So we are moving forward this year as we did in 24. So I will go back a little bit. That final Raftelis recommendation did have a 5% rate increase recommendation and a 4% capital investment fee recommendation. In 2025, we did go back and review direction of the board, the appropriateness of actually of having a 5% increase on our capital investment fees as well. It was justified based on cost indices and construction cost indices being the biggest one, C dot is one of the kind of guiding ones that we'll use here. And that is the same for 2025. So we are proposing a 5% increase to capital investment fees this year as well. The next few slides are just giving a quick comparison between existing 2024 rates and then those proposed rates there boxed in for 2025. Both base rates and the tier rate structures. And kind of go through these relatively quickly so we can kind of get to the meat of it. Also, you know, same 5% increase across our commercial tiers and base rates as well as our irrigation rate. Of note, there was that also a change, significant change in the structure of our irrigation rates in 2023, where we developed a rate structure that was based on a seasonal rate structure as opposed to, I'm sorry, excuse me, I had a coke, apologize. Where there is that irrigation use in the summertime, so there's a little less use if for some reason they're doing some additional irrigation outside of the shoulder months, for sure, outside of that peak demand time. But mainly it is capturing that usage on a per thousand gallon basis based on time of year usage. And again, same 5% increase for our base and usage rate for wastewater. And again, across all of our capital investment fees. Of note, we do not have a fixed capital investment fee for larger than two-inch taps. There's, we don't have many of those in town. And one, I think, yeah, I think so. And that, that's essentially based on when folks come in and we will assess that based on their total water demand and peak demand needs. So I did pull together some regional rate and fee comparisons, just to kind of see where we land as we know how expensive it is for us. This is a, and I want to caveat this with, I did not make a phone call to, to all of the communities that I've pulled data for. These are, this is all current fee schedule-based data from surrounding communities. There can be sometimes difficulty in interpreting folks' fee schedules. It's pretty clear for single family, it gets a little bit muddier related to commercial, we'll look at some of that. So I feel pretty confident about what my estimate is of, you know, 3,000 gallons of red, single-family residential usage. And, and the next slide is 15,000 gallons. Gets a little bit harder sometimes to interpret on the commercial rates. So I just want to say, yeah, caveat that point. But we are, our neighbors have, are catching up to us. And of note, something I found pretty interesting. I believe it was Eaton as well, but I know Nun and Severance for sure, I think Eaton as well, have new rate structures in place that are very similar to ours. So they have sort of this fixed base rate now that includes a base level of usage. Some of them is 3,000 gallons, some is four. Also trying, and then usage rates on top of that. But I found that interesting that I think we were sort of leading the way in our region that way. I wouldn't be surprised to find out Raftelis likely consulted with, with them. They're pretty regionally known. So we're kind of there in the middle. This is for 3,000 gallons water usage, yeah. So that, but you know, for example, Nun is at 60, $60 is the base rate and that base rate includes, I think, 4,000 gallons of usage. At $60. And ours is, our proposed is, was 52.
So are the others then our 3,000?
Yeah, yeah. All, well, not necessarily, but yeah, this would be the cost based on 3,000 gallons of usage for a single-family home, whether it's just a base rate charge or it's a base rate plus a usage charge. So a certain amount per 3,000 gallons. And you'll see that difference when we jump to our costs for higher usage gets really high, really fast. And we're very aware of that. You know, Alt is, is coming up on a close second, but $240 for 15,000 gallons of usage is unfortunate. Now, one thing I do want to note on here, I think. No, not yet. Yeah, this is, this is just water cost. So this is not the full bill. This is just water. So yeah, it's, we are very high for the region. Painfully. This is where it gets a little bit trickier. Most communities, actually, I think almost all of them that I looked at do have a differing rate structure for their commercial users. They, similar to ours, like our commercial tier structure, rate structure does not include anything in the base rate. So that their base rate is, it looks a lot smaller, it is smaller. It also does not include any water in that base rate, though. So they're paying for every 1,000 gallons. That's pretty similar across the other communities that I looked at. And you can see that we're pretty high for our commercial costs as well. So I mean, those high-water users, just like as our higher, higher residential use, that cost gets very high. It also gets very high here for our commercial users. Wastewater cost comparison, I was a little bit surprised to see the spread. Historically wastewater costs don't vary as much across communities, and at least in my experience. That spread is widening quite a bit in the region. It's not surprising, given there's a lot of construction projects going on, a lot of our smaller communities, Johnstown, Windsor, I think Windsor, Just fit Greeley just finished an upgrade on the wastewater facility, like there's, there's been a lot of construction happening. So we're still kind of upper in that, in that higher tier, but it was interesting to see that, that break. All of a sudden, you know, we're at the top and then it goes really expensive right after us. And that is true in our non-residential cost comparison as well. This is the, this was the part that was a little bit hard for me to interpret on some of the fee structures. So this is one where I, I I believe I'm correct. I'm 95% sure that I interpreted the fee schedules correctly, but there can be a little bit of room for interpretation in, in some of the structures, like some of them are assuming they do base it on winter quarter average still, even for commercial. Now, commercial customers could very, very easily have a winter quarter average that is this high. One thing I will note, I think it's very possible that communities like Alt and Mead probably don't have commercial users that hot, that large of commercial users. So I think it's possible their rate structures weren't necessarily set up with an intention of capturing a 70,000 gallon, you know, winter quarter average user. Internet connection is unstable.
Rates, not monthly rates.
These are monthly rates. And what I, so many communities and, and our single-family and multifamily residential is the same way, where we look at your, the wastewater charge, your usage charge is based on how much water you used in the months of January, February, and March, the average of those three months, with the intention of it being, the assumption is that is sort of your base water use that you're using in your home, that's going to go down the drain into this wastewater system. And so many communities still use that for commercial customers as well. With our rate update in 2023, we, we used to do it that way as well, but with the rate update in 2023, we got away from that for commercial customers. And now their monthly wastewater charge is based on how much water they used in that month and not just a winter quarter average, you know, or three months, average of three months of use earlier in the year. As we do know, a good portion, though there is broadly speaking in our commercial, our commercial community, an increase in water use that's during the summer months, it's not nearly as directly correlated as it being outdoor water use. There's water use that happens with increased production, increased services, cooling. You think about that, any of these large buildings that have cooling towers or anything like that. And that all eventually goes to our wastewater system. So to get, we were looking and needed to recapture the cost of those increased push to our wastewater facility in the summer that was coming from that commercial community more directly. And so I don't know that, not every other community, many communities that we're looking at here, it might behoove me, I could maybe update that with this graph to note which communities base their commercial usage still for wastewater utilizing the winter quarter average, I could inform. But there's just, there's, it's a large spread. I mean, Windsor, I don't know how they're paying for their stuff. And Mead, that seems awfully high. I mean, $500 in our realm is, is pretty high. So I did, I did feel like in the wastewater world, we were likely not going to be at the top and we're not. So I did do a regional comparison too for our capital investment fees, both water and wastewater. One thing of note, I did kind of, all of these communities, including Wellington, also have a two-inch capital investment fee that skews this graph a lot, because that gets really high. It's, you know, 80 or 90 grand and you couldn't really see the granularity down here. So I did omit that, but I wanted to include one and a half, is that's a pretty common commercial size. That happens, one inch is our most common, but one and a half is pretty common as well. And then also just to kind of see that comparison across. I'm surprised Johnstown's able to keep its capital investment fee so low, especially considering the expansions that they're going through. But we're not grossly low or grossly high, just comparatively. Although again, all of these rates and fees, they're not market-driven. They're driven based on what it costs on our end to provide the service and what it costs to have the capacity in our system to bring in commercial users later. And those costs are going to be different across all communities, based on the types of customers they have, the system they have in place, how old their system is, all those factors. But again, our wastewater capital investment fee, this one also seeing so much more spread than I would have anticipated. Excuse me. It's kind of an interesting analysis. So I did want to present some customer cost impacts. This graph has a lot of colors and I, I realize not everybody can see colors, so I know that's a fault of mine. But I did want to show an entire bill for a single family customer, so we can see, because it's not just a water cost and it can be, it can be misconstrued if we say your bills only, you know, it's going to be $100, but it's not just 100 because it has wastewater and it has storm drainage and it has Box Elder Stormwater Authority and all those things. So this is on the left, the two columns are showing you what these costs would be for a typical winter bill, which is at 3,000 gallons. Of note, historically, our typical winter bills were 4,000 gallons. There has been reduction even in our indoor use in town. So our typical winter bills now is 3,000 and that typical more common summer bill is at a 15,000 gallons of outdoor water use. So you can see that giant, giant cyan or whatever. Main driving cost for that $280 bill is that volume of water usage. Similarly, I offered up a couple of comparisons for water or for commercial and irrigation. Of note, I don't have stormwater fees in here as they differ for all of our commercial customers. Those stormwater fees are based on like impervious area for our commercial customers. And so it's going to vary depending on how large the property is, how large their footprint is, or paved area and that sort of thing. So I did just peel out and these are strictly a water and wastewater cost comparison. It doesn't have drainage in there. So you do see that increase as expected. And there's a one and a half inch tap size, water and wastewater comparison. The 24 rates versus our 23 proposed rates. And then our irrigation tap, which you can see is obviously driven wholly by the volume of water that's used. Those are some really large bills.
How many just irrigation only taps do we have?
In the tens.
Yeah.
Like, I would be surprised if there were 20. It's mainly HOAs. There are some commercial.
So we have some lots where they have an irrigation tap as well as their
Indoor tap.
Their indoor tap.
And that's the direction that we've are going. For example, most commercial development, if they're going to have any real amount of area outside to irrigate, we will require them to have an irrigation-only tap. Multifamily development is all required to have a separate irrigation tap for their outdoor irrigation. That provides a lot of security to the town and flexibility during times of need. So drought, emergency infrastructure issues that we can just physically turn people's irrigation tap off if we need to, but ensure that they're always have accessible to indoor water demand and usage. So over time, we'll get more, but we don't have that many. So just a quick summary of a little more detail around that dollar amount increase that we'll be seeing for these average residential taps and commercial and irrigation. Now, what is the impact to our funds? I do want to highlight, these are, I have provided updated financial projections. These are projections, as is everything in the budget world. We are, there have been some minor adjustments if folks had gone back and looked at, and for Trustee Cannon in particular, from the work session that the board had the first time that we talked on this topic last month. There've been some minor adjustments to those financial projections as there's, as we've gotten closer to the end of the year and updated end-of-year expenditure projections, made sure to align some of the assumptions within the broader budget effort with the rate models and making sure everything aligned perfectly. And then also some CIP changes where we've pushed some projects out.
And, and to that point, there, as the budget budget season, I could call it, continues, we'll still be refining these numbers. So just for an example, HR will be updating our overhead transfers here in the next couple of weeks. Where we're looking at the end-of-year estimate. Where we're looking at the end of year estimate based on ten months of wages and benefits. Um, forecasting that for the remainder of the year and then determining based on, you know, fifteen percent of my time is allocated here, ten percent of my time is allocated here. So the, the three enterprise funds essentially pay that back to the town through what we're called overhead transfers. So what we see tomorrow night in the overhead transfers, or you can see it in the packet right now, um, will be updated. Here in a few weeks to just a better.
More refined.
More refined number.
So there are some um. Kind of broader takeaways I wanted to review as part of the these financial projections, I'm starting with the water fund. This, w- we are assuming and will take place this year as the six million dollar intra-fund loan. With a ten-year repayment schedule and as a reminder, that was touched on actually in the twenty twenty-two rate study by Reftelis. It was identified in that study that there would be a need, I think at that point it was an estimate of four and a half million. Um, in order to keep the water fund whole through um, operational and CIP needs. And and most of that was driven by a shortfall. It wasn't even a shortfall. Um, the SRF loan that we have, so the state revolving fund loan that we have for the water plant was intentionally. And known that we took out a an amount less than what the construction cost would be, that was intentional as we were being as conservative as we could be. We had a bucket of money in the water fund, we were going to pay a fair bit of that with cash. Um, in the intervening years from when that decision was made to now, those ever, those. The increasing, significant increase in costs that we have with the North Peter contract specifically ate up a lot of that. Cushion, um, that we were going to pay for part of the construction with cash. Because of that, we were plugging that hole with um, an in. It's not really a loan because it's within the same fund, but we are responsibly tracking it as a loan. So that we can ensure that we get the money back into the reserve fund, the raw water reserve fund where it needs to go. So that we can have money there to continue our efforts to get out of that pocket with North Pooter and kind of diversify that portfolio more. So there is the six million dollar loan that does plug a gap that's needed. Um, we have it uh, modeled in the rate study with a a repayment plan that kicks off next year. Six hundred thousand dollars a year for ten years to make sure, and and there is some flexibility in that, obviously, as we. That's a po- a policy decision and recommendation, um, but the the biggest thing is just making sure that we are tracking it. Um, and it doesn't get lost in any shuffle or ever forgotten about.
It was essentially from one reserve in the water fund to another reserve in the water fund, so the net difference in the water fund.
Is zero.
Is zero, but it kept the, the reserves where they needed to be. Um, and. We do have it allocated, the payments are scheduled um, in for next year and included in the budget.
Um, I do want to note that, you know, these uh, financial projections do include the, the general fund transfer that was approved by the board already for twenty twenty-four. Not that the transfer has been made yet, that happens at the end of the year, but our assumed transfer for that based on the uh, projected revenues for the fund. And then we are also assuming uh, a, one more transfer in twenty twenty-five, the fund projections. Or the financial fa- plan projections at this point are not including additional transfers beyond twenty twenty-five. Mainly because we really need to stop doing that. Um, is it is been a, you know, it's a multimillion dollar impact over the last. Because we, the first one we did was in twenty twenty-two, so we've done it twenty-two, twenty-three, now twenty-four, and we're projecting for twenty-five. The board so far has chosen, has shown their support in in um, making that transfer again for twenty twenty-five. As it does offset. Revenue needs in in those funds.
Quick question on that one.
Yep.
So combined fund balance is negative in twenty twenty-six, would it not be with the allowable transfer?
Um, no, it would still be.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll see those numbers.
Gotcha.
The um, we are exceeding and and that's part of where some of the CIP has moved, CIP has moved around a little bit to ensure that we do, we are exceeding our reserve policy for twenty twenty-five. So twenty twenty-five is the budget year that's up for approval, it is the rate. Um, year that we're, you know, asking for rates to be approved. These financial projections are just that, they're projections for next year, for the subsequent years, so we have an idea of where we're headed. But there are a lot of intervening things that can happen in that timeframe, there's a lot of, mod- there, there's. Operational savings that we can try and to ha- have, there are CIP modifications that can take place if needed. But we do want to project what we need in expenditures, including CIP. As if we don't, then we're not, uh, we don't have the ability to set the right capital investment fees if we're not showing what our capital needs are appropriately. Um, and we don't want to get caught behind the eight ball of not understanding what our operational costs are. And again, you'll see in these line items the the extent of the North Pooter impact to that. We do show uh, combined fund deficit spending that starts, um, that happens this year. And and you can see that there's no end year to that comment. Um, same with the last bullet there, we go negative in twenty twenty-six for our fund balance, our actual fund balance, not. Reserve balance even, our true fund balance, and I don't have an end year on that either. Now, in the wastewater fund, things aren't quite so dire, um. We are also, again, the general fund transfers, these have been a tremendous help. Uh, we do exceed our reserve policy for twenty twenty-five. Uh, we do see some deficit spending in twenty-four, five, six, and seven. However, um, we have one, one year that in twenty twenty-seven where we see the combined fund balance go negative, it's a very small amount. Um, and I do believe that we'll be able to make that up and uh, we still have some outstanding. Um, unknowns with the uh, wastewater treatment project, um, our, our water treatment plant is sub- is uh, finally complete, not meaning finally is. Meaning we did substantial completion, we've done final completion, they are offsite, HP contractors are gone. Uh, we know where we're going to stand, how much money will will come in under on that contract. Uh, that dollar amount's not reflected in the project uh, or in the funds yet, as it's not been finalized, it should be coming in front of the board. Before the end of the year, the final like SRF or the uh, final construction payment. Um, in the upcoming month, I think. The wastewater fund, we don't have as clear of a picture, uh, the picture I can paint fuzzily though, is we do anticipate coming in under the contract amount. Um, we do anticipate there being dollars coming back to the town, and when I say dollars coming back, that's not the correct way, correct way to say it. Currently in the, in the CIP, we have budgeted the full amount of the contract, so we're assuming that we're spending the full amount that we have contracted for. Because that's the most responsible way to do it until we know that we're going to come in under. Um, my point is that we're getting really close. I do believe we will come in under and we're getting much closer to understand how much under. And that, that one transaction will, will bring us out of that, that deficit point, so once we have that sort of imply, and we'll know really well, um. First quarter of next year, we'll have a a much, much, much better handle on on exactly what that dollar amount will look like.
The. SRF closeout is scheduled for November nineteenth.
Okay, next month. So um, that'll let us have a better handle on the water fund, unfortunately, that construction project's not going to see. Uh, near as much savings though. But any dollar helps.
One thing to note is the ozone filter has been running now, or ozone.
Uh-huh, our ozone system.
System for four weeks, five weeks.
Probably more like six.
Six, so haste and and odor should have.
Pretty good.
Significantly improved. Oh, shouldn't be any taste in over it now, there's. Not necessarily.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It does take some time to get out of that, so. This is our com- uh, snapshot of our combined water enterprise fund. Couple of things to highlight is you will see um, under the expected twenty twenty-four column, I know these numbers are small, um, you can see that um. Influx there of that intra-fund loan under our sources of funds, there's that six million. And then if you go down under uses of funds in twenty twenty-five, you'll see intra-fund loan payment, right? Um, of six hundred thousand, so just so that we're tracking it in our system and we don't lose sight of any of those things. Couple of other things of note, the. Our, our impact fee revenues are called tap fees here, they're line number five. Those are based on our crystal ball assumptions. Of the kind of development that we're going to bring in and ha- and have available, which we all know is impacted greatly by. Market conditions far outside of any of our control. And you can see there a a really big increase between twenty, what we're expecting to end up with in twenty twenty-four and what we're hoping to end up with in twenty twenty-five.
How many taps is that?
That is, do you have that at your fingertips?
A hundred and eight next year.
Hundred and eight next year.
But the one point two.
Right, for twenty-five, that's based on a hun- a hundred and eight, yeah.
So two hundred or something for the next year after that.
I think it's a hundred and, do you have that? Oh, he's going to do the math really quick and get us the estimate.
Two, four, six. Two thousands, two thousand sixty-two.
What's two thousand sixty-two?
Caps or um. Permits for the tap fees.
Two hundred?
Yeah, well, yeah, hang on.
It's too many zeros in there.
Sure is.
If I could have dual access, I could pull up.
Hundred and, hundred and eighty-two.
Okay, that makes a hundred and eighty, so I think it's a hundred, a hundred and eighty. And then it gets kind of steady state after that.
That seems optimistic.
Um, potentially, there's a, um.
Turn down in the economy.
I think it should.
You got, you've already got developments going through the planning process.
Exactly.
Homes that are, that are planned, so we're sort of created time, so it's easier to do than that. But, you know, slow down the economy.
That can change things.
You know, it could. Issue, but.
Um, but we, go ahead.
I was gonna say, these projections do come from um, Cody Berta, our planning director, who is having the conversations and and with trustee Cannon's point. Developments that are, you know, are being discussed. Um, but it is a crystal ball, um, and we rely a lot on Cody's expertise and experience. Um, but he's, he's been pretty spot on.
He has been, and I will say one thing that can sk- um. That can make this line item look different, for example, twenty twenty-four, we're not going to hit what, what. The projections we originally thought, and that was because at the end of twenty twenty-three. Just before, and this often happens, just before uh, impact fee increases went into effect. There was like twelve or fourteen permits that got pulled at the end of twenty twenty-three. So though the fund that those dollars didn't hit in twenty twenty-four like projected as a whole across a three-year period. We still got the same amount of projected revenue, um. So the um, there's a possibility that could happen again a little bit. Um, but we do have, you know, there's uh, developments that have been plotted and approved.
Do your figures about your projected tap fees include the five percent increase?
It does, it does.
Because I see a lot of similar numbers in it.
Yeah, and as you get out further, it does not. So, and that, that's just a a a modeling issue. Um, that I ha- I I updated it to assure for the, these first couple of years, but yeah, you can see that in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Um, those hold constant, so that doesn't have that additional five percent, so we could see an increase.
Is it the five percent for five years and so seven would be the last year of the, the five percent?
I think eight would be.
And we're going to do another rate study and we're going to keep saying the same thing.
Exactly.
And I want to go down a rabbit hole with this question, but just because it's on this.
Slide, yeah.
Topic, the, all the East Mulberry construction. Is new since this was modeled, and so are the projections being accounted for with the. Next to Wellington construction that's being done where um. People might choose to live closer to Fort Collins. If they're going to be buying a brand new house versus driving to Wellington, that sort of kind of perspective, is that included in this planning?
Generally, so the, the multiple years out planning is based on the comprehensive study that was done in twenty twenty-one. It was completed in twenty twenty-one or adopted in twenty twenty-one, um, and so those, those. Steady state numbers that we get to out there, starting in like twenty twenty-seven. That's based on um, steady state numbers that were developed as part of the planning effort, co- comprehensive planning effort in twenty twenty. Now. Cody's estimates that get done for this next year, you know, are assumptions for what we're going to get to for completion of this year and then our nearest term year. And then even in, you know, an additional year out, he can have a little better clarity on it. Beyond that, we are taking those numbers from that comprehensive study as there was a great deal of analysis that went in with that. That's the reason those studies do need to be updated though on a fairly regular interval, um. Five years, maybe if we can swing it. But. Estimates for next year are based directly on commitments and conversations that are already in place. Um, and develop, with developers that we already have relationships with.
Next year's numbers are more.
Pretty, yeah, pretty firm.
More precise.
Yeah, and then beyond that, what's the crystal ball gets fuzzier and fuzzier with each passing year, for sure.
Okay.
Absolutely, um, you can also see a line number eight, bond loan proceeds this year. Well, we're tapping out the rest of that SRF loan, we don't have any more monies coming from that, um, as we close out that project. And to um, to the point down here on line twenty-two. Um, is where you'll see that fund balance going negative in twenty twenty-six. And um, I guess one of the, and it just becomes ugly. It's not pleasant.
So.
Effort to investigate.
And another question on the, the growth, so the, the growth in the tap fees is much bigger, much quicker than the operations expense? Is there no connection between the operations expense and the number of taps?
Um. Is in terms of what happens at the water treatment facility, not really, because we took on that expense with the loan. Amount with expanding that infrastructure need, so as long as.
Marginal increases and costs.
You will see some, if you go down to the um, uses of funds, total capital, you do see, that's line eighteen. You will see some kind of ebbing and flowing in that as we're looking to time additional projects that are going to have to take place. Those aren't, some of that is growth driven in terms of if you want, if you uh, look into the budget that's available in the packet tomorrow. Or the now, but for tomorrow's presentation, um, there are some line items uh, in the water or in the capital plan associated with. Uh, line oversizing projects, sewer and waterline, both oversizing projects. Um, there's an interest, that happens and Nick can probably speak to this better than I can, but. That we receive that funding, we receive funding from the developer in the form of tap fees for that, and then we squirrel away. Uh, uh, kind of in an escrow, it's not formally an escrow, I don't think, but um, in a separate account, the piece that is going to pay for. Um, this additional oversizing, but we also need to show that expenditure somewhere too. So some of these dollar, you know, those capital dollars are. That, those oversizing expenditures related to water and sewer oversizing. But for the most part, broadly speaking, this is probably going to come back to bite me, but broadly speaking, with the expansion of both facilities, we've really. Kind of leveled off a lot of that um, growth-related demand on the facility side.
Okay, that's very helpful.
Okay.
And in, in tomorrow's packet, what she's, the page she's referring to, the capital projects is page one forty-three.
And you can kind of fine tooth comb some of that.
For the water, I should, that's one page, one forty-three.
Um, and I do want to note, so line thirteen, that's our operation and maintenance expense. So we're looking at, you know, whatever, a long-term average here is about six million dollars, a little less than that, five and, five and a half, we're at five and a half million dollars of operating expense next year. The singular line item for North Pooter is at two point nine million. So almost fifty percent of our entire O and M.
So I'm sure we've covered this at some point before, but how long is that contract again?
So it's, it's actively being renegotiated right now.
Right, but when do we actually, when is it actually in?
It doesn't.
It's perpetual, okay.
Perpetual, yeah, and so we are, we are in, in their. Business a lot, um, trying to, to, to push and force this issue, um.
What tools do we have, sorry to cut you off.
No, please.
What leverage can we exert?
We, we don't.
Anything, we're just gonna.
We don't.
Guilt?
Guilt is about, yeah.
That's about it, that's about it.
Yeah. If they, if they feel sorry for us, then they'll renegotiate it, kind of, do they just like the money they're preparing?
Who else can they supply?
They supply their ten thou- their, yeah, farmers, their shareholders, they have, um, they answer to their share, obviously, obviously, on a call about this this morning or afternoon. Um, talking to our legal team about, um, this is not, it's not competition at all, so um, I feel comfortable saying this, but just about to your point. Uh, you know, a governing body, they don't, they don't have a governing body, their governing body are their, are their shareholders. Um.
But do they supply to other municipalities, it's just as, isn't it?
Well.
Through shares, they do.
Through their shares, they do.
Okay, and North Pooter, I mean, Fort Collins, only about thirty-eight hundred shares of North Pooter.
Yeah, I mean, they're, uh, North Pooter is, North Pooter Irrigation Company is predominantly munis- Yeah, I mean, they, uh, North Pooter is, North Pooter Irrigation Company is predominantly municipally owned now.
Okay.
However, uh, we are the only couple of things, we're the only municipal that received water through their system through a contract like this, so we're not using water that's tied, that are tied to shares we own, it's a, it's a water supply contract. We're also currently the only municipal diverter that diverts inside their system, and that's kind of confusing to think about. But all other municipal diverters that they have, so municipal owners, they divert their water before it ever goes into their distribution system, their set of canals. They divert it off the river and divert it to their facilities that are adjacent to the river. And so that creates a different, a very different kind of relationship with the company. Um, our relationship is very different than the relationship they have with some of their other municipal owners. We have made great progress, and I have a lot of faith that it will happen, but I have less faith in estimating the timeline. I really, really, really felt very optimistic until about two weeks ago, that it would happen by, you know, Q one of twenty twenty five.
So we need the Brighton Pipeline to come through town.
Thornton, um. But that, that, no, not really, because that, we would have to own Wisk to do that, so I mean, it's still a, um, water supply and storage company. It's a whole different set of water rights. So we are, you know, just as a little bit of, of, of an aside, um, we have, are actively working on a water source development plan. That project kicked off in June of this year. We are, um, uh, we have an advisory group that meets with that, as a matter of fact, we have a meeting this week on Wednesday evening. We are identifying alternative sources to ensure that we can diversify our portfolio. Um, and to ensure that we have, uh, you know, a supply in our long term to adequately support the town. Currently, we ha, we have adequate water supply, we have enough water available to us, under the current structure of that contract is too expensive to maintain. Um, and North Pooter understands that. Um, I think a lot of the struggle right now is that it's a big deal to renegotiate the contract, it's a, you know, we would be looking at another similarly framed perpetual contract, there's always caveats to a perpetual contract, is, you know, if both parties agree to renegotiate, you can always renegotiate, but, but you, we need it to be firm and confirmed for the long haul. So there's just a lot of, uh, consternation is not the right word, but, um, caution. Everybody's very cautious about how it gets done, and so it's just, has been a slower than process than is helpful.
Yeah.
I know.
Competition, this whole scenario sure would be nice.
Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, I mean, the, I guess the flip side, what, you know, what leverage do we have, well we could not pay. Who goes to court, I mean, that, that's.
That's true, we could just not pay.
And then see what happens, I guess, and then it becomes a legal issue, and there'll be, I, who knows what would happen.
It'll also bring a lot of public attention.
It would, it would.
Which can translate into leverage.
It could.
I'm not saying should, we, we should, I'm just.
Well, everyone, everyone in town still thinks it's the town that's jacking up the rates, but at the end of the day, it's more complete, yeah.
I, I do have questions.
Other questions, please go ahead.
We're getting close to the end of time, but I would probably need to go scroll back up.
Sure, I'm happy to. Uh, if you wanna just take, take a glance, uh, real quick, I'll just, then let me just go to the, the wastewater, um, enterprise fund. There aren't as many, um, kind of of notes on, on this one, I do wanna highlight, though, that on line six, we do identify grant funding that has been secured, we don't put grants in the planning effort if we don't, because there can be squishy and unknown. But we do have a six hundred and eight thousand dollar grant, um, congressionally awarded funding for, um, that's tied to a capital project. Um, for our lift station, uh, an upgrade to our lift station, so that will offset probably half the project cost, so that's great. And then you will also see here, um, uh, state loan proceeds die out next year for that project, as we'll be wrapping that up, and it goes away. And the unfortunate, very high price tag of that loan amount, um, at, oh, you know, close to two and a half million dollars annually for thirty years, so that's a, that's a big one. But yes, I'm, and that was, um, I did just wanna say a couple of things, uh, we are intending and have, and have board support um, to turn around and tackle a, a more formal update to that rate empty study. Uh, as soon as we roll into the new year, budgets approved and active, um, it was recommended that we review, uh, rate studies should be reviewed every three to five years, we're gonna come in on the early end of that, it'll be three years next year. Uh, knowing that we've completed a couple of big projects, we have, uh, better CIP planning in place, we, it's just and given the moving parts that we have, hopefully we'll have better information with North Pooter, and it would be wise for us to review that, so we can really ensure that we're we, we don't ever wanna be overcharging, ever. And again, highlighting this, the ongoing contract renegotiations, I did want to say on this, uh, slide, I did kind of summarize what we'd been looking at. Um, I spoke to it earlier about these general fund transfers and the magnitude over time that that has had, um, combined on the general fund. Uh, to date through this year, it will be, you know, close to three million already, um, and another million coming and pro, proposed for next year. So that's, you know, looking at close to four million dollars that the general fund needs. Ideally, to have been kept in the general fund, um, so we, we're working really hard to stop that from happening, um, it's been a tremendous offset and help. But we also know we can't, it's just, it's not healthy to keep that going, it's not, it's absolutely not. So, on that, I think that is my last slide, so, yeah, let's go back to questions, where do you want me to go?
Um, I'm going back to more, it's more to prompt me to remember what your questions were, but the highest singular fund expenses slide is where I went back to. And so my first question, though, is on the, which isn't even that slide, so I apologize. On the residential water, these the, I, I live in a neighborhood where my irrigation water comes through the my tap.
Okay.
Other people, um, in other neighborhoods next to me and elsewhere, um, don't have irrigation water coming through the tap. Where is their irrigation water coming from? Is that part of the Pooter Water Supply, is that part of any paid for supply?
Those would be part of the, um, at the time of development, there would have been an ag well associated with that property. And that ag well was, is being utilized now to irrigate that parcel. And those, uh, historical ag wells are stipulated that they can't, uh, those use, their use cannot be expanded, so they can't, they, they have, they can only irrigate water that was historically irrigated under that decree for the well, which is generally the development itself. And there, I, I don't know the history exactly in town of when we began ensuring that all ag wells were, were utilized to irrigate. The development, uh, wasn't always that way, but I would say we have close to, and I trust you can, maybe I'll speak to some too, but uh, I think we have close to, close, I think it's forty, more than forty percent of our residential homes have access to non-potable irrigation. It's not very helpful to the other sixty percent, but, uh, it's a pretty large number, um, which is great, and moving forward, it will be, um, it's almost required, um, it, in a, in a cost sense, it becomes almost cost prohibitive to be developing if you don't have, um, non-potable water available for irrigation.
So is there any city expense to for the purple pipe stuff?
Uh, currently, no, if we look to expand, and that, that is, um, an option to, to reduce, for example, uh, one opportunity could be someday, because there's a lot of capital expense to it. But we have wells, we utilize some wells in town for potable water, we treat it and put in our distribution system. Now that the drink, the new facility is larger, um, they could, uh, capture that demand there. And we could potentially use those wells to develop a non-pot system, perhaps for this nearby old town area.
It gets tricky with, with, with well degrees and, you know, water court, and what you can use the water for.
And where it can be used.
Where it can be used, but, I mean, it's, it's a.
Unnecessarily difficult at times.
Well, it's a hundred.
It's a function of the.
Thirty, forty years of, of precedent.
Yeah, a function of prior appropriation system.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure I understood that right, because I think in the current climate, you're pretty brave to promote higher water prices, uh, because it's, we all know.
Yeah.
And as somebody who pays for irrigation, um, that's something that I think about. And so on the, on your other slides, you were using fifteen thousand gallons as a reference point. Um, that's nowhere close for me and probably many people, um, that have a regular HOA-sized yard. I have neighbors, elderly neighbors that can't even irrigate because they can't afford to do it, so they're not doing it. And so my yard that's green and theirs is.
Not green.
It's just the circumstances that my summer water usage is, um, closer to twenty four. Uh, between twenty and twenty four, and I said, I know there's other many other homes in my neighborhood that have greener yards than me, and so I, I think their water usage is even gonna be higher. So I, I think it would be more, um, representative to include a higher level than just the fifteen K as the high cutoff.
It, uh, we do find, I mean, our data tells us that that, that is actually the average for, uh, potable water users in the summer is about, is fifteen thousand.
Including the people with irrigated.
Right, that's, yeah, so for, for folks that are. No, that's, that's taking that out, um, our average, if you include everybody, is like seven or eight thousand. Um, but when you're looking at just those homes that don't have access to non-potable water, they have to irrigate with the, their treated drinking water. The average that we see is fifteen thousand gallons in the summer months.
Yeah, so when there's an average, that's right in the middle, and so that does not reflect the high end, and so you take my neighbor and me as examples, they're not watering at all, they're three thousand gallon, like, users, and they're being measured against mine. And so that's why you're seeing fifteen thousand, so I, I don't think that, um, average is the right calculation to use for that, because you're getting bold. Where, what we wanna be able to do is demonstrate, if you irrigate your yard, this is the kind of water bill you're gonna have, because that's, those are the people that are on the news, the thousand dollar water bills. Those are the people watering their yards, not the people not watering.
So, you know, we've got a lot of subdivisions that, that have popped up over the past twenty, some odd years or so. When the developer puts in the irrigation system, especially on a potable system, and they put it in, so they, they configure that irrigation system for new, new grass, new sign, and it's overwatering, and a lot of people never go back and adjust that back. And so these thirty and forty thousand gallon irrigation bills, you know, the town is, is, there's no malfunctioning meters, um, you know, there's all the, all the complaints that are on social media, you know, none of those are valid, a lot of that is just simply understanding, I think in the education piece is really what's needed more than anything in, in Wellington. It's gotta be a major edu- education push, and it can be tied to our water efficiency plan, it can be tied to you know, rate studies and so forth like that, there was a, a great example at our open house last week, uh, one of our, uh, coworkers, employees, Jesse. Took two years, twenty two and twenty four, and under the twenty two, which is according to his, it was the fourth hottest summer home record in twenty. Yeah, he showed pictures of different irrigation techniques that he'd use, he just, he just used the, the standard irrigation. But in twenty twenty four, what he did was he went with a, something like a soak cycle. Uh, which changed things and, and reduced his water usage considerably. His grass was a hell of a lot greener than it was back in twenty four, but it's an education piece, I mean, I don't touch my, my rain bird because I don't have any of those, like, I, I don't start messing around that thing, and this thing, I don't wanna be watering the sidewalk five days in a row.
If, if, one thing's now, um, so the town does offer or does sponsor irrigation audits, so you can have, um.
Have some flyers.
Yeah, it's a little late in the season for that now, but I, it's in the budget, it is in the budget for next year.
Now's a good time for people to do thinking about what the irrigation is, and a good ed- education piece.
And, and to your point, one of the things that's come up in these irrigation audits is if you have water running off of your lawn, onto your sidewalk, and then down your street drainage, you're either overwatering, you're not allowing enough time to soak. Um, so those irrigation audits are helpful.
One of Jesse's soak side, but it's, it's like three minutes per zone.
Can't even remember, because he, he went from, he went from cycling two zone, two zones per, per night to three zones per night, but he shortened up the time, and so he sho, he was irrigating forty minutes less per week.
I think now, three minutes per zone.
I think, and, but, but then cycling through three zones, three cycles, yeah.
That way it soaks in, and then you get hit again, and it soaks in, hitting it soaks in.
And he used.
Does that twice a week, and apparently.
He cut his water bill back by, was ten, ten thousand gallons.
I a hundred percent agree that some kind of big master plan for addressing that topic.
Kind of education topic.
Would be, I mean, huge, and I, every summer I have like three or four landscape people that come and tell me their favorite thing to do with the sprinklers and, um, it's who do I listen to, you know, who, who actually knows what they're talking about, so even there could be, even be a way for the town to vet some people who have been through a certain kind of certification or.
And there are, there are those kinds of certification programs, actually.
And that kind of information.
Let me ask you a question, Megan, um, so the town completed the water efficiency plan, that means we have, uh, access to funds, grant funds, to promote projects on the water efficiency plan. And things like irrigation audits, uh, and so forth, there could be grant funding, that could be help, offset the cost for that education.
We haven't recently, when we, when we lost, we lost a staff person earlier this year that was focused on our efficiency program. Um, and we haven't been able to back, or we haven't backfilled that position yet, but I, there, yeah, there are, are opportunities for that.
That position is actively posted right now.
Right now, okay.
Yeah, that's, those who see that, we see beer, right?
Yep, there are definitely grants available for that kind of stuff through C W C B.
And there was a whole list of, of, you know, I think you could probably pull it from, from the town website, for water efficiency, but there's a whole list of projects about how to make watering more efficient, and a conversation that I wanna have with the board, and I've, and I've discussed it a couple of times, is I've learned, I was just starting thinking and evaluating on what our normal irrigation is during the summertime, as opposed to just issuing emergency irrigation restrictions. You know, there are examples of communities out there that, that say, okay, starting this month, this is your maximum.
This is your watering schedule.
Yeah, this, this is your schedule, this is, this is, this is.
You get three, these three days.
Huge family, you know, so it's, it's, it's a carrot and stick kind of approach to it, but it's, it's a normal now, it's not, it's not. You know, because you put these signs out for emergency watering, and you drive past a subdivision that has well water non-potable, and there's sprinklers going.
In the middle of the day.
In the middle of the day, you know, water running down the spring, and then you move to the next subdivision and.
And they're all brown, yeah.
That's my world. I, I think, I think with a good education piece, you know, some, um, and I'm not trying to direct that, I would rather have a conversation with the board about that, probably sometime after the first year. About an education piece, about how we can address this and be proactive, get ahead of that before the summer hits, because the messaging here is gonna be, give rates quarter five percent.
You know, and, you know, along those lines, one thing that I think a lot of people don't have, and I'm, it's me too. You can get rain sensors for your irrigation, that way you're, it's not spewing out water.
And there are, do you?
You have that? Yeah, and, and AI-based thing, and I have a weather station, like, I've got the. Eight thousand, like, eight, five hundred, it's just a corner lot. So it, I haven't noticed a difference other than it'll shut it off if it's windy, or if it's thirty two degrees.
We, we did notice though, last year, there was, um, twenty three significantly lower use with as much water as we had gotten last year, um, so lo- lower, when, when the rate. l- lower, when when the rate structure ran into play, uh, may not have seemed as impactful.
Oh, cause in twenty twenty three, it was such a wet year. Many people didn't irrigate at all. Like we can see that on the record that never, or they only turned it on like in August and landed irrigated for like a month cause it rained all the way through July.
So I did have another question, um, and that's what this like kind of, kind of prompted, the rate setting. In the, in this last five years or so, we've had, um, the it rate of inflation has been off the charts uh, compared to what is normal. And then in the last year, we all know interest rates um, skyrocketed to record highs. And it's gonna take a while for them to get back to the numbers that we're used to. So the rate setting doesn't account for that. It doesn't, it's just like a five percent every year. It's not indexed off of interest rates or um, the variable costs that that are gonna change, just that.
Um, so the rate models embed assumed inflationary factors across different uh, pockets of expenses. So there are different inflationary factors associated with labor than there is uh, operational expenses. We have the ability to, we've embedded a different inflationary factor for the North Pooter line item cause it doesn't follow a typical cost index increase, um, so that we can kind of capture that. Uh, so there are um, in uh, inflationary increases embedded in the modeling, but it's not tied to a uh, the entire process is not tied to a single um, inflationary cost increase.
Cause it, it seems, if I'm understanding, all of the numbers and the calculations are the the fees are not keeping up with the increased costs. And so we're injecting cash loads in and, um, then it then we're not accounting for that in the fees. Is that true?
I think that the um, the that singular increase of the North Pooter line, we just can't keep up with. If we did, if we tried to, um, we would be at like another round of a a fifty or a hundred percent rate increase. And we don't wanna do that. Um, and so we are trying to piecemeal together what we can to work on this renegotiation rap- you know, as rapidly as we possibly can to ensure that we can get out from underneath that high cost expenditure. That's not tied to any kind of uh, inflation or any kind of e- estimatable planning factor.
Yeah, the two big variables in that contract is most of North Pooter's share, which hasn't changed much in the past couple of years.
No, but it's skyrocketed, but like this, and then it's sort of leveled off a little bit.
One hundred, one twenty, then it's got to a quarter. And it's hanging at uh, two fifty now, but the interest rate, which no one's staff can even point to like the national interest rate is, is some kind of farm loan interest rate that North Pooter comes up with. That we don't know and can't control. And it was the interest rate following COVID, when, when, when the Fed started pushing interest rates up to curve inflation. That affected our water price. And if you look at, look at the, the biggest cost increase in our water just in the past four years.
It's because of that interest rate.
Become because of that interest rate.
The one that Pooter is coming up with.
Yeah, and they, they, they call banker. I mean, then they.
A bank.
A banker. They call, they call one bank, a banker.
Yeah, right.
And and I will say also, there is anyway, I don't, there's no need to get into the history of that, but the, um, you know, they they don't, they don't just make it up out of thin air. Um, but it's not based on something that is uh, agreeable. It's not based, or it's not based on something that is we can use to predict, right? So we're looking at trying to renegotiate this with an a- an escalator that's tied to a a CPI that we can track and follow and know what it would be. And it increases it, you know, some kind of tangible o- open to everyone index, right? It's not hidden behind some closed door that we just don't know about until they issue us their invoice. Something we can plan against.
So we're in negotiations and if they make their hostile negotiations, I would tell our entire town, start showing up at their board meetings. Pitchforks with signs with burning effigies.
Yeah.
And 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 tell them, you know, you're robbing us by.
But it's, you know, it's, we're set, you know, they.
I just want you so bad.
I know. But it is a con- it's a legally binding contract that we willingly entered.
And that's just it. If we don't pay.
Then what happens?
We get sued.
Right.
And we lose.
Probably right, cause it's a legally bonded contract that we willingly entered. For forty years.
Forty one years. And to say.
Oh, sorry, can't do it now. So, next.
Legal fees.
Everything else.
Forget renegotiations after that.
I guess the next really is just a comment. I don't think that the amount that the rates are going up are unconscionable. You know, it's talking about a dollar or two, depending on where you fall into things and that's probably not even inflation level.
Right.
So I I have no personal concerns about that. It, I just know it's gonna be another drag through the.
Another heck of a year.
Yeah, and um, social media and news and all the things. So, um, I think the education, pe- public education will be huge. And coming right out, almost as direct as trustee Cannon is with, this is what, your bill is going up because it's going to these guys, not to us, you know, some whatever that communication needs to look like. And you might think about engaging your crisis communication team in advance.
Oh, yeah.
Because uh, this is, the, those burning effigies are gonna come to the trustee meeting. They're not gonna go to Pooter. So be being ahead of that would go a long ways. I've tried to do some of that education thing like, no, you're building up because you use more water, like, um, they, they just don't believe that. And they think that you all need to be investigated. And I think that's the most ridiculous thing, but I understand finance better than the average person. So, um, there's only so much that I can do to help ward that off. So I think you guys are in the driving seat for being able to help people understand why, where it's going. And it's not going into your paychecks. It's not going to your retirements.
No, I'm in our pockets.
Right, exactly.
There was direction from them, I'm gonna steer this conversation away from that. Direction from the board in in the midst of the summer, um, and and the the phone calls, the the posts, um, to be more proactive. In in, after the start of the year, in the ramp up to irrigation. So I do anticipate a joint effort from administration, from finance, from public works.
Get out in front of it and 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 provide those educational opportunities. And to to, uh, to your point, there, or I know, I think it was you that had mentioned that there are other grant opportunities out there to do things that, you know, right now, our water efficiency program, um, we, we do offer uh, the free irrigation audits. Those are free of charge. We do offer, we participate in the garden and a box program with Resource Central. That's not free of charge, but it is a discounted um, opportunity for you to to secure some xeric plants, you know, and take some area out of irrigation and and, you know, have a a more xeric garden area. There are other opportunities that we've participated in the past, such as uh, low flow showerhead exchanges. We, we, uh, there are opportunities, I think even with Northern Water, to to partner with some low flow toilet exchanges. You know, pretty low cost. But there are even, I think, additional opportunities that could be, um, helping offset the cost of new um, irrigation sense or um, controllers. There's opportunities to do that. They're not, and they're not free. I mean, a good new one, that's a, that's over a hundred dollars. That's not nothing.
And I, I, you know, I would recommend.
And there are opportunities for some of that.
I would recommend going through that water efficiency plan.
Oh, yeah.
In that list of of things. I mean, they, they laid out, you know, these, these are your biggest bang for the buck. Sometimes you might need to look at the, the smaller bang for the buck, but if it, if it helps to reach the objective. You know, that, that was pretty. I think doing the water fishy plan was a great thing that the town did. And technically, we're not required to do it unless we're producing two thousand acre feet of treating two thousand acre feet a year. So, and we're well underneath that, you know. But having that plan opens the door to different kind of funding that can help us. And I think it can help reduce water usage in town, but we, we've just got to start exercising that plan and and uh, and looking at solutions.
I will say, and as much as we advertised the slow the fro- flow, you know, free irrigation audits to come out and help people understand the irrigation system, they will walk, step through and reprogram your, your system with you and that sort of thing. We still didn't utilize all the ones that we secured. And we sent out all, all the ways we could think of to send out the notifications through social media, through through the newsletter, through speaking of it at board meetings. We still didn't utilize all of that.
Sexier name than irrigation audit.
Slow the flow.
Slow the flow, yeah. I, I didn't see that one.
Slow the flow.
Like I, I have a low moon device, um, that's in my water systems in my the hype coming into my house that measures how much water is being used by the second. And it tells you if you have a leak, like if there's a dripping faucet, it's sensitive enough to be able to tell you if you have a teenager that takes a long shower. Yeah, it'll, it'll shut off the water after, um, it gives you a five minute warning, but like in case the water pack broke. It sets up the water. Yeah, and if that worked wonders when I first put it in, cause.
Pre-training.
Oops. And so, uh, so it's a good, but it keeps track. So I know, I know how much water I just um, on a ongoing basis in the house. And I, I didn't have it plumbed in to include the irrigation, um, tea, which now I wish I did. Yeah, um, I could have a plumber come and move it and and get that part, but it it's super helpful. And you can put little water sensors in places where you might have a leak that you would want it to shut off the water if there was a water leak. So.
Like coming out of your hot water heater.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. You could add sensors for that kind of thing that's plugged into it, but it's, um, it's coming in handy a lot. And.
One, one thing, uh, if you do go through the packet in the capital fund, you will see for in the water fund, um, a line item to complete our automated metering infrastructure network. We are actively, and it's a pretty big dollar amount. Um, I think it's nine hundred and ninety.
Nine ninety.
Nine ninety thousand. That gets us all the remaining meters and builds the infrastructure and provides us the software connection. So the network, you go to ra- radio tower infrastructure, um, that allows these automatic reads to come in. But also at the, at the uh, behest of the board of trustee request, um, now includes the cost, that nine ninety would include the cost of a customer facing portal that people could, could or choose to log on to or use or not use, um, that would allow us to do things like um, send out loop notifications if you have, or they call them continuous consumption notifications. You've had water that's been running for some X amount of time. And we are actively, which I needed to do some of that today, but um, working on a grant application for close to half a million dollars to offset the cost of that project, um, with the Bureau of Reclamation. So fingers crossed on that. It would be a huge win. And it would be a huge win to get that infrastructure fully complete for a variety of reasons. I mean, even, even before we were looking at including the cost to have a customer facing portal, cause it is just an additional software cost. And it's a, it's a long-term commitment because you're paying a software subscription at an item, but, um, it, it was gonna allow, it would give us just internally those, we would have just received that continuous consumption notification would call, you know, could call a customer that way. Um, I'm really, really excited. This is a, a big deal, um, cause our community is already about is more than half equipped with the meters in place, with the right meters.
Seventy five percent.
Yeah, okay, two thirds, yeah. Um, so we need that last one third of meters and then we need the, the radio tower infrastructure and then the software. And our, our billing software is already compatible with the uh, monitoring software. Um, so there's no additional cost there. So it should be pretty seamless. And it will, there'll be, uh, staff burden cost savings as well. We're not physically, our team was out, you know, starting our meter reading round today, you know, it takes them three to four and a half days, depending on leaves and snow.
I didn't tell you from having the app.
How useful that is.
It's super useful, like that sort of thing would be, that would be a, a huge thing to let the community know about. Like as you're raising the rate, you're like, hey, we're gonna soon be able to give you a tool that you can better manage your water usage.
In real time, you can actually see it.
Yeah, you can turn on your sprinklers.
And watch, literally watch it. Yeah. Yeah.
So when, when would this be anticipated?
Um, the, uh, notification for the award. So we're gonna slow roll the project just a little bit because there are certain, um, we wanna know if we get the award or not before we go too hot and heavy, cause if you go too far with the project and you do get the award, then they cannot grant it because you've already started digging, so to speak. But we should receive, uh, we're expecting to receive notification by May. Um, and, and so it would be, you know, best case would be end of twenty five, best case. Probably more likely Q one to Q two of twenty six. But.
Before irrigation season.
Of twenty six.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, that would by far be the goal. So, and then there'll be a lot of rollout and education with that too. But I, that's a huge one. I mean, there are a lot of, it's a big deal. And we have some surrounding communities that still, I mean, City of Loveland still doesn't have um, automated water and uh, metering infrastructure. They've just rolled over for their electrical infrastructure that they don't have for the water. Which is surprising. Any other questions?
I do wanna acknowledge the time. Are there any other last minute questions?
Hold on this section.
Perfect. Well, thank you, Debbie.
Absolutely. I appreciate the opportunity. It helps me kind of refine for tomorrow evening and think about some additional uh, informational pieces to add in the presentation.
Now, as far as our remaining um, agenda items, so I did put some, a little bit of commentary in the um, packet. So we, we did have some turnover, like, uh, I had previously shared. We are getting back on track, um, in the, so what I provided in the finance committee packet, uh, this month is the, um, July reported bills, which was previously provided to the board. Uh, and the July treasures report, which is being provided to the board tomorrow. So this is, if there's questions, I'd be happy to take those. Um, we can go through that now. If I don't have an answer, I'd be happy to follow up um, by email. If there's other questions we wanna discuss, I'm open to that as well.
Yeah, most of my questions are on the water and sewer fund. Obviously, I think they were answered, so good job.
Oh, great.
Uh, the only thing I have is really just a follow up on, you know, where we have with the audit.
Wonderful question. I talked, actually, is this the same pad? It is. I talked with Jim Hinkle of, um, Hinkle and agency, um, today. He thinks it is a Hinkle company. Um, they are, have drafted our twenty twenty two, um, audit report. There are a few uh, items that are left to, um, just flesh out. Uh, and our consultant, Mr. Rhodes, uh, immediately jumped on that email and has started been getting those last items for him. Um, he is still very hopeful that we will have an end of year. Uh, or excuse me, um, twenty three done by the end of year as well. Um, setting us up to be on track and on time for a normal twenty four. Um, and I said, normal, what's, what's that? There was a new auditor provided to us in July. That auditor has left the firm. So we are now back to the, the auditor in name on the firm, Hinkle. Uh, Mr. Hinkle, Jim Hinkle is, has taken this file on, on himself. So we are, uh, Dawn is, is working on it right now. And, um, there were several weeks of un, unresponsive emails. And now I understand why. So, um, yes, and now I, I, I will say that in the treasures report, you're gonna see no um, property taxes.
Right.
One discussion that has been had is we really should be booking or or can be booking those property taxes as receivables. Um, it is money that is being held for us, that is ours, that will come to us when the requirements are met. It can be recorded as a, an accounts receivable. Uh, that would, that would make. Uh, that was, that would make that zero dollar item look slightly different.
Yeah.
Um, we are in the budget projecting the twenty-two uh property taxes would be released to us. Um, and we are, uh, we are, will be able to account for that if it doesn't happen. Um, the, the dollar in the bank account and the dollar on your, your reports are different. We are still very secure, um, in our cash on hand and, um, as much as. It looks bad to be a zero, um, that is an accounting more than anything else. But the audit is, is not. I've been hearing about audits for two and how many, we've been doing this three years.
Yeah.
Um, I've been hearing audits for three years. Um, it's not something that's, that has gone by the way, say.
Sure, sure. Pure, pure curiosity.
Yeah.
So when the twenty-two audit's done, we get the twenty-two property taxes.
So pa- property tax payments stopped in, I believe it was November of twenty-three.
Okay.
So they will catch us up to, I believe it would be October of last year. Is when property taxes would have stopped for twenty-three.
Gotcha.
So.
Okay, do we get interest?
Yeah, right, interest group.
I believe the county is keeping that.
It's kind of why I wanna, yes, it's my money and I want it now.
Understood. It, it would do very well for us in a Call of Trust account right now, so. Questions? Anything else on, uh, Porterville's treasures report? All right, trustee Cannon, any reports?
No, just be happy to get this budget approved. I think, I think. The board of trustees will be working. We, we have a requirement now. A grand budget presented to the board by a certain day which we met. But between now and when it's approved, I think there's been some discussion on a lot of different levels about, um. Some of the intent and some of the capital, some of the expenditures and so forth. I think there may be some more discussion about that. To shuffle some of those timelines around, uh. More than that, I can say, at this point.
Just if anyone is.
Is it?
Curious.
Contentious at the trustee room?
No, no, I don't think it's contentious as at all with us. It's a matter of, you know, where's our priorities.
Okay.
Oh, geez.
So large.
I'll take the dog.
Yeah, there's a cute page, um.
Yes, big packing for Mark.
Anyways, I was gonna try and show you the, uh, the calendar.
You were on it.
I, and then I. That's something and. Here we go, getting there. So, um, I neglected, and I realize this now, and it'll be in my comments to put finance committee on there. Finance committee will be November eighteenth. Where it'll come here, um, doesn't mean that you can't. I mean, please do review packets. I'm happy to send you links. You're, I'm happy to take questions. Or trustee Cannon as well. He's been on the email, so you have his act, his email, um, address as well. So. The public, this committee and our board is ultimately what drives.
So basically, we, we've got a. Essentially a couple of weeks of discussion before this November the nineteenth. Now you can still have a meeting in December to approve the budget. Uh, it needs a public hearing. Uh, the public hearing doesn't have to happen right now. It could happen on the nineteenth and then it goes back and then, and it's made. But, uh, I know that the board has canceled a meeting in November.
And one in December.
And in December already, because there's really no business, ties in with holidays and so.
The holiday schedule this year.
It's tough.
Thanksgiving is the fourth week, so we, we will have board members out.
And then Christmas and New Year's or Wednesday, which makes Christmas Eve a.
Yeah.
Tuesday of a board meeting.
And we're not gonna do that.
Yeah.
We did.
I won't show.
We did, uh, I should say the board did move a regular meeting to what would normally be a work session week.
Which is that November.
Which is the November nineteenth to ensure that there are still two public meetings in November. So, anything else for the good of the order? We'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, folks.